Morning. Meeting to order appears we do have a quorum and with that I'd like to welcome Enos Lowberg to the table. Thanks for stepping up and trying to fill a big pair of shoes sitting in that seat, so. We appreciate what you're doing and look forward to working with you in the future here, so. Take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
We're moved.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, there's a motion in a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion will carry. County engineer, Rich Braum, good morning.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, um, not much discussed, this 390th and Thrush intersection. I'm gonna bring some people from LTAP in or maybe the DOT to come evaluate some of that too, just to see if there are other options available or what their suggestions might be. And they'll bring in, depending on who I talk to, they could bring another, other specialist, maybe the state patrol. They've got a, they've got a group that will do safety, safety visits in certain counties at upon request, so. We'll see what kind of opinions they have at the intersection. Talking to other colleagues, some say you're not gonna change people's habits if they run stop signs or not. Some people say maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, there's a lot of disclaimers saying, hey, look, people have habits. So just, we're gonna, we're gonna touch base with some people that have worked with it and see what their suggestions might be, so. Not to say that it's not gonna happen, not to say that it will, but we're gonna, we're gonna dig into the research a little bit to see what's possible. Had a request, I guess it's kind of been an ongoing thing. Few years ago, a couple of years ago, Northern Natural Gas put in a station up there on 465th, Level B road.
Yep, yep.
They built on a Level B road.
It's over in Silver Lake.
Yep, on Silver Lake Township. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are, I think we plow it for snow, but for some reason they don't like the Level B signs up, which I think it's a dead end road, is it?
No, well, no, it's a through road, but.
Okay, I'm thinking of, of another.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of another location.
No, this one's a through road.
So, um, I guess, I don't know what the issue is with them being on a Level B road, if it's. I mean, it's up to you guys whether you wanna get rid of the, the classification of it, but I mean, it's still a minimum maintenance road.
Right.
They access it every day, but a lot of minimum maintenance roads are accessed by a lot of people every day, and if we're plowing it. I don't know what their deal is, if it's.
Is there a concern about maybe if they have fire or something?
Well, I don't know about, I don't know if that matters, I mean, we're still maintaining it, you know, like in the wintertime, and. I don't know if it's on their end because it's a Level B road, that they've got more paperwork to fill, you know, like a school bus, if they've got. I'm not quite sure what the situation is with them, but they are just asking, and I'm like, you know. You chose to build there, I guess, it's up to you guys how you wanna do it, but that's another mile of road that would have to be.
Maintained.
Maintained if we take the Level B signs down, and maybe I'll call and find out what the real issue is, because we should be plowing it. I know that a year ago or whatever, the board decided that we should keep it open just for emergency, you know, if they're accessing it and if there's an emergency there that.
Cause it's not manned, I don't think.
No, it's not manned, it's just somebody probably check every day or something.
What, what classifies or makes something a Level B road versus a regular road?
Board, I mean, the difference is, is minimum ma- maintenance, so technically, I think.
Usually nobody lives on them.
Usually no, when everything was designated as Level B years ago, it was, well, heck, if there's nobody living on this road, we really need to maintain it to a higher standard. If it's not being accessed now, but the shortcut, you know, that's people's own option to take that road or not, so I think. I don't know if it was the eighties when a lot of these Level Bs came in, but it was, if nobody lived on it, I think a lot of them got classified as Level B just to reduce the cost of maintenance. And as we've seen over time, there are more hog facilities built on these Level B roads now because nobody lives on them. And now it seems like we're finding other things that are taking place on Level B roads, and then, of course, they want. Upgraded status, and as of right now, the Worth County and the board do not have a policy on road upgrades.
But I assume they pay a fair amount of property tax on that structure out there.
I don't know what they pay.
And I would hope they do anyway.
They, they should, they're utility companies, so they should.
I mean, you check into and.
I'll find out what the real issue is with, with that, and.
Yeah, cause I think as far as I know, I don't get up there every day, I mean, I don't go up there and I'll take that road every once in a while, the road's in really good shape and it's usually open.
Yeah, so I, 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 I think it might be a technicality on their, might be on their paperwork end, that if they're on a Level B road, it might have more red tape to. Jump through every time they wanna do something, I'm not quite sure.
But for safety issues, I mean, if there was something went wrong, they wanna make sure that you can get through them.
I got this last week and I didn't get a chance to call the individual back yet.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you a heads up on, on what's happening, I'll give you some information next week. Other than that, that's really all I've got.
Okay, sounds good, anybody else got questions for Rich?
I'll be back here for the amendment, so if you guys got any questions too.
Good job, my son.
Did a good job of cleaning up.
Alrighty, uh, do you have anything in drainage?
Not today.
No drainage today, no claims today?
Um, looks like I got a couple of payroll to catch up on.
Something like that. So these are.
Payroll claims?
Payroll claim, JJ.
Alright, take a motion to approve the payroll claims.
We'll move.
Second?
Seconded.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright, claims are approved. Are there any reports?
No.
Reports? Payroll eligibility or salary changes?
Nope.
Liquor license?
Nope.
Addendum to agreement for law enforcement.
I guess that's, I'll have to get signatures later.
Yeah, that's for me, yeah.
Yeah, um, I have FERL and Hanlon Town.
Okay, so this is a.
Our annual.
Renewal or.
Yeah.
Fee updates and stuff, I think, yeah.
Okay, take a motion to approve the addendum for law enforcement for Fertile and Hanlon Town.
I'll second it.
Alright, there's a motion in a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Uh, skip over the budget amendment till nine then, anything new on the road vacation?
No.
Nothing, okay. Winworth Vetco.
Yeah, the bar and restaurant relief came out today, the application, um, just went live today. I did mail all bars and restaurants in Winnebago and Worth County a letter with the information, and I have a couple of appointments set up, so we're gonna go through that. Now, if you know a bar or restaurant owner, the biggest thing that they need is to have an updated tax returns, they have to be in good standing with the taxes. And they have to be able to show a loss, so you have to have good bookkeeping. So, um, I have an appointment later this afternoon with one bar, so if you know anybody, send them my way, if they need help, otherwise, the information's on our website.
Melissa, would that include like the two wedding venues we have in Worth County, that have their licenses, I think they both have them?
Yeah, I'd have to look into that, the main thing is a, your sole purpose has to be serving food or drink, and it has to be a sit-down, so no drive-throughs.
Okay.
I, I think they probably would, Mark, because, um, you know, they do have a liquor license, they did. And the, the biggest thing is fifteen percent reduction in business, I think is one of the main qualifiers, so I think they might be eligible to gain some of that.
According to, the definition is a full-service restaurant, a bar, brewery, brew pub, distillery, or a winery. And then the full-service restaurants, uh, definition is. Provides food services to patrons who order and are served while seated and pay after eating.
Well, I don't know, I, I, I'd let them know, and then if you could, and they can check into it or whatever, it'd be.
I'll give the, my contact a call and, and ask them before I notify the venues.
That'd be great, Melissa, appreciate it.
You bet.
I'm guessing.
How about, uh.
Yeah.
Everything you needed for Sukup?
Yep, I think so, I just sent it to her about ten minutes ago.
Okay, sounds good, so they should be able to continue their process then, right?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions for Melissa?
So that app, is, are you talking about the application for Sukup?
I sent the resolutions, then she, I A D files it, and then they get in contact with Sukup, and Sukup goes over it and signs it and gets it back to I A D.
Okay, so, um, I thought Chris said something about an application that needed to be filled out and run through the board, didn't he?
Yeah, I think I remember him saying that when I watched the meeting last week. I will follow up on that, and we'll just make sure that you get copies of everything, and I have copies of everything, does that sound good?
Sounds good.
That sounds right, don't it, AJ, there's something.
Yeah. He was gonna email it, I thought, to Jackie or whoever, did, did you get anything from him, Jackie?
No, but I, I sent what I needed to him, so I'll, I'll touch back with him and see.
Yeah, he was gonna email that, I know he said that application, because there will need to be one. I think I A D, I A D is after that resolution, making sure it's clear, but Chris should have something, so.
Then we just approve it, Major will sign it, I think.
And I, I'm not sure in that application if that's part of the portion where we make our decision on how. We're gonna assist them with their taxes, whether it's three-year abatement or the ten-year sliding scale or whatever, so. We'll just see what that, what that application says, I guess, so. Okay, sounds good, thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, Jason Petersburg, is he on this morning?
Don't see him.
Um, I talked to them a little bit last week, and. The plat has been recorded, and it's on Iowa Land Records, so all that's taken care of, um. Joel, have you heard anything from Jason?
Um, no, I, I did get, uh, some GIS files from, from those guys, I haven't looked at them yet.
Okay, I think he was gonna maybe contact you or send you the, the line work to lay the lots out on, uh. On our GIS, so that it shows where the lots are.
To get those, but this is a new subdivision, is it not?
Yes.
Yep, so I'll have to do some more work than, it, it, it's a help, it, you know, it'll help get me going, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I've got a little bit more work to do to get the subdivision laid out.
Okay, okay, I just know he was gonna send you the, the line work or whatever, so you could, whatever, start with your process, I guess, so.
I, I did receive that, I have done nothing with it as of yet.
Okay, no problem, no problem, so. Um, but otherwise, yeah, that was all done, and he was, um. Uh, he was gonna do something else, I can't remember what, but we were gonna look into, uh. Or he was gonna get us the total, that's what it was, the total on everything, we got our bill from Heartland Power last week, or the end of the week before, and, um, they came in, right? It was actually cheaper than what they originally told us, but then with their second, uh, they came within a couple thousand dollars of their second price, so. So we were pretty much right on there, um, so now he should have all the numbers exactly for what it's gonna take per square foot, so now. We can, uh, set the pricing here, hopefully through the next, next meeting or two, try to get that figured out, so. And then I think, uh, Jeff was working on getting that deed back to, uh, Diamond Joe for their lot, so. Alright, uh, people's service on there for any reason, is it just leftover?
It just left.
Okay. Uh, department head discussion, any COVID-19 discussion with department heads?
Changes.
I know vaccinations are starting in the U O C, so the U O C will be shut down for the time being.
Okay, starting today or whatever?
I believe starting today.
I think that's what Jesse said.
Like February first was the day they were start the, uh. Age five and older.
Year one B.
Yep, yep, so. Other than that, I haven't heard of anything from anybody, so appears we're all doing okay. Other than myself.
Hopefully you are.
I'm just awaiting results, I'm, my, my wife came back negative, so that's a good sign, so.
Hope for the best.
Yep, yep, so. Uh, if there's nothing else there, then, uh, any more new board appointments?
Yeah, um, can we run through the ones officially for Enus? Okay, he'll be on. The Winworth Vetco Advisory Board, the Board of Directors for the Second Judicial District Department of Correctional Services. The Upper Wa- Upper Cedar Watershed, I can't talk today, Management Improvement Authority Board of Directors. Um, the North Central Iowa Decategorization Project Governance Board, ready for all that?
I, I scanned them.
North Iowa Children's Alliance, Homeward Housing Trust, and that, we also need to appoint, um, Jeannie Foss is on that with you too.
Okay.
And, um, Melissa is also listed on that one, if, if that, if you still agree with that, or leave that. And then, uh, North Iowa Regional Housing Authority is the one we, AJ swapped you for. I think that's all of them for Enus.
E M A, nine one one.
Oh, yeah, and then the regular ones, yeah, E M A and nine one one. And then he will also be the alternate for, um, Northwest Iowa Care.
Okay.
I think that's all of them. And any, anything else you want on this list, I'm trying to make it more. More information, cause when I got here, I, I didn't even know what some of the boards were, so it was just a bunch of letters. So, um, I'm trying to get a better explanation, so that when somebody new comes in. You know who to go to and all that good stuff, and I have, I think I've pretty much contacted anybody I can to say that you're it. So, and I've passed on your email address and all that good stuff, so hopefully you'll start getting emails from the different. Groups and get on their meetings.
Okay.
So then the other, oh, motion for that probably.
Right, their motion, approve the, uh, board appointments for, as read?
So, so, so moved.
Alright, I'll second that motion. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Perfect, don't worry, Enus, it looks like a lot of them, but there's some that only meet once a year and some are kinda quarterly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think there may be one or two that Ken has never, Kenny was never even, they never had a meeting, so if it ever does come up, it'd be a surprise.
Okay, and then the other one we have is, um. Bradtrude was on.
Yeah.
The Board of Adjustment, if I remember right, and. We need to, or you guys need to find somebody in those three townships for that one.
Danville preferably, right?
Possibly, yeah. Yeah, cause were you gonna talk to somebody?
Yeah, I've got a couple guys I was gonna ask about that. That may be interested, so. I will, I'll do some research on that, hope I can find their, both of them are maybe a pretty easy catch, I think, but I'll, I'll still, I, I think I can get that covered, so. And then, uh, zoning commission, we got that one covered, right, Justin Faber took that one?
The only thing that I wasn't understanding is, um, Jeff Gorbol talked about moving from one to the other, and, well, it, it, they both say. Those three townships, so that really doesn't do us any good.
No.
So I don't know what, what you guys wanna do on that. But wherever you want.
Wherever.
Well, let's try to get, try to get this Board of Adjustment covered first, and then we can, uh, talk with Jeff and see what his thoughts are. What we need to do, I guess. So.
That's all I got.
Supervisor Weekly, Mark.
Nothing other than I watched most of the statewide supervisors meeting, I got a phone call just towards the end, so I missed the actual business meeting, but I had a. Call from a person about some drainage stuff, and ended up chatting with him while I kinda watched the meeting, but I had stuff, so I didn't get to hear the last of it, so. That's all I had last week.
Okay. Um, I had, uh. Care Connections, Mental Health, um, we went through budget, and, um, looks like we're gonna be levying twenty-eight dollars per capita. Where with, last year when we went into that, we were budgeting, or levying thirty-five eighteen. It's a good drop, and, uh, we're still higher, us three counties, uh, that just joined are still higher, cause we're trying to build equity into that region that was already established, which, which seems fair. Um, those guys are all. Right around fifteen dollars, I believe, is what they're levying, so what our plan is, is to stay up where we were at and just kinda slowly work down, so we don't take that dramatic drop and then increase. And play the roller coaster game, so, but, uh, it's a good start, I mean, seven dollars a person, it is a very good start, so. And they're gonna do that with Hancock County, Hancock is gonna probably join us, and they're gonna do the same with them, start them at the, at the maximum. Uh, let them build some equity in, and, uh, and then get them down, so then, hopefully within about three to five years, we're all at the same level. And paying for the same thing, we've all got equity in the place, so.
AJ, so Enus, Enus had a couple, or a question on that, how many, how many counties are in there now, and then the other question would be, we got the money back from where we were, does that money go into the fund balance, or what do we do with it?
It's in fund ten right now until I get told what to do with it.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll, um, I'll chat with Melissa over there, but the, uh, there's, it's gonna be seven counties now. In which four of us will be, you know, Worth, Winnebago, Castuth, and then I'm pretty sure Hancock will be joining, and then we got, um. Clay, Palo Alto, and Osceola, so it is a little spread out, but we are, we still have all the services around here that we needed. And we're also going to summon new services coming up, um, we've got options to, to get as close as we can for travel. Um, we did not go in with, uh, the group to the west on that building. It's just too much money too fast, and, and, uh, we're just gonna wait it out and see what happens, and try to find, make sure we find a better location for our entire region, so. And then, yeah, that money's back from CSS, um, is just in our fund balance now, but that will go down, that money will get transferred to, um. Care Connections, because that was part of the agreement, and the state says we have to have our fund balance spent now into, to forty percent, whatever, so. I'll have to talk with Melissa and see how that process works over there, and, uh, and then go from there on that, so. And also, yeah, I did the statewide supervisor meeting, which was, uh, pretty good, um. Lot of stuff going on, of, of course, ninety percent of it's all COVID-related and stuff like that, but it sounds like everybody's kinda getting back in, uh, the motion of things down to state, so. Um, hopefully, I know EMS is a, a fairly high priority over there, where the governor made it sound, and, um. And obviously broadband internet, but, and they are giving some money to mental health too, so hopefully over the next few years, that'll maybe help us get these new, uh, new resources going. And not cost our taxpayers so much, the state can, uh, take some of that cost, so. But that's about all I had, Enus, did you do anything exciting last week, or?
I had in on that state virtual meeting too, picked up same stuff that you did off of it. The fact that there are thirty million going into mental health over the next two years, and there's a hundred and fifty million from the governor going into broadband.
Right.
Get everybody up to date on that over there, and she wants that up to date by twenty twenty-five, so I, I was impressed with that.
Yep, they're pushing, and I agree, broadband needs it, but I don't know, we should have threw a little more at mental health, but. I guess that's their call, anything, anything's a bonus, because, uh, they, um, yeah, they keep throwing stuff at us and not funding it, so hopefully they'll help us fund this stuff.
Kinda funds it.
That, that broadband was the recommendations of our working group from last year, so that was interesting to say they took all those recommendations.
Right, very true.
Did they indicate where the, um, sports betting money's gonna go yet?
No.
No.
Have not heard that either, um, and I haven't talked with, with Jane Bloomingdale, she's the one that said they were gonna try to, yeah, shove some of that towards EMS and possibly mental health maybe too, but. That was still set in, as far as I know. Right, um, anything for next week's agenda?
I'm gonna bump out that District Two landowner meeting, I, I've got. It's, it's District Two, it's gonna be all a District Two, and I need a little bit more time to get my ducks in a row. But I'll, I'll get those reset and let you know.
Okay.
And F E H, I'm working with them to, to line up a date. So, February might get busy.
Well, that's fine. Good time of year to be inside.
Is it?
It's been like that all year, right?
Um, I, I did wanna say that I do have my ISAC board meeting on February tenth, so if there's anything you guys want me to bring up to the ISAC board, please let me know.
Keep them, keep those agendas coming out for these meetings a little bit ahead of the time, so we know whether, whether to or not, or how much we wanna participate in, they, they're pretty famous for letting them out about the day ahead of the meeting, and I hate that.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass that one, Kelly.
They should be able to put an agenda out there, what's gonna happen a lot, thirty days ahead, I would hope, so we know, I mean, when we're registering, what we're gonna be doing, so.
Yeah, I just got the agenda today for our meeting, which is, you know.
Not too bad.
No.
It's ten days anyway.
I'll take that.
Well, and if they're shifting from in-person to virtual, that might take a little doing too, I don't know.
Well, that would really be nice, and I mean, that way we could say, not necessarily, we could pick what we wanted to really learn about, and not.
Did you guys get the informational thing about spring school with all the days broken out?
Yeah, yeah, just starting tomorrow, is that right?
March, actually.
Oh, yeah, I think the wrong month, yeah, it's March second.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was.
Some reason I thought it's in February, I was going through the list this morning.
The dates line up the same for both months.
Well, I was looking at a calendar, it's weird that.
Okay, good.
So you got time, then?
I haven't seen anything on the, uh, new officer school stuff yet, I know they said it would be coming out, but I haven't seen anything email-wise.
And I've let Katie know that we want you to get that stuff too, so.
So those three weeks, or those three days in January didn't happen for new officers?
I think.
It went virtual, so it's a library that you guys can visit and information that you can consume, so. I don't know if it's available yet. They're supposed to be compiling it.
They recorded it, so I could get on it.
Yep.
I've gone through it twice, and I still wanna go through it again, and every time it comes, it's, it's good information.
It's, it's a great experience, especially when it's in person.
Yeah.
And it starts clicking more the longer you're in.
It does. Always refreshing.
Uh, well, too, Mark, I don't know if I mentioned. Last week that I talked with, uh, some landowners over about north of Keenan's Quarry on some drainage.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that one time.
Yeah, well, we, I'd, I'd been contacted a couple months ago from an individual about doing that drip, drip leg thing.
Right.
Irrigation, and I don't know that that's gonna go, but I've talked with another gentleman who's. Looking at purchasing some of that land up, up on the north end of there, it's right on the south side of Northwood, uh, Wood Harbor or wherever, up in that area. And they, um, were just discussing drainage, getting some drainage stuff fixed towards the south end, I know it would include, um. Some land that Chris Ruglin farms, uh, Dolby, and then also Mike Wilkins, I think. So there, he's trying to work with those guys, uh, privately to see if they can come up with a solution to get that fixed. Um, and if, if they all kinda can get on a general consensus, then he would probably move forward buying the land, but he just trying to figure out how they can get drainage to work there, cause I know it's a little bit of an issue with the railroad tracks, and it's been a mess for years, the way it sounds, but. So that may be.
It's in a district, right, but they've, they're kinda trying to work it out themselves, I think, is what, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's DD fourteen, um, and it's, yeah, they're, they're trying to work it out themselves and make, get the best solution, so it works for everybody. Um, and it's not very many landowners or very many acres either, it's just, but it's still in a district, and if they can all get it to work out together the easy way, that's, that seems easier for us, so.
Yeah, if they wanna handle it and collect the money, that's, that's, yeah.
That's kinda what I said, if you guys take care of it, we'll, uh, we'll give the blessing. That's kinda what I said, if you guys take care of it, we'll, uh, we'll give the blessing most likely, so.
As long as they're not
Come back later.
Improving, or if they're staying to specs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, something to tell them, technically, even if they're kinda forming their own board and doing this on their own, they're still supposed to follow the laws of state drainage code. But, you know, as far as dollars and engineering and all that good stuff, I mean, I know it's easier to try to do it yourself, but technically, they are supposed to still follow the drainage laws.
Fourteen has about seven hundred acres.
Yeah. Yep, so we'll, we'll see how it comes out, like, so this guy's looking at buying about three hundred and fifteen of it or something, so. Let's see what. Well, it is nine o'clock, so have a budget amendment?
Yep. Um, the main thing that I did the budget amendment for was, um, if you remember last year, we had a, um, project, a scanning project that I thought was gonna hit last year, well, it ended up hitting this year.
Okay.
And, um, I took the money from Joel for a little while. He, he, he kinda wants it back, so. And, and kinda already spent some of it, so I need to get it back in there. Um, that was the one thing, um.
And that was all grant money originally, so.
Another thing was, um, yeah, thank you, and another thing was NCRERC, one of those letters things, um, the dues increased, and I didn't get that in last year's budget, so I increased that by four hundred and fifty-six dollars, so that, um, budget isn't over. Um, medical examiner. I'm just nervous about, um, the amount of money we've been spending, um, sending bodies to Ankeny and stuff like that, it hasn't gotten any better, so I'm just putting, and, um, we've had the additional layer of having the medical examiner investigator, so I'm just putting, uh, I, I wouldn't want, I don't wanna say a cushion, but a little more leeway, the only thing that's not good is, i- it's not levied for, so I'll spend more money, but it'll ta- if, if it does end up being more, it's gonna take the balance down. So I put five thousand in diagnostic evaluation and five thousand in medical and health services. Um, insurance. I put eleven thousand dollars in unemployment compensation, for some reason, that's been going up, but then I think Shelley said that for next year, it's gonna be down again, so I don't know what's going on with that, but I, I plugged that in, so that's works out okay. Um, there's the scanning project, Winworth Vetco, I don't know if you remember that, I thought that it was fifty thousand, it wasn't fifty thousand, so I put fifty thousand more in there, so we can pay the rest of the year on that.
Okay.
And then, um, for planning and zoning, I had pulled down the, um, budgeted amount for the department head, well, now that we have Matt, I'm, I'm putting that back up in case we need to pay him a little bit more, so I put three thousand dollars there, and for the secondary roads part.
What are you moving over for?
That, that's, that's.
So, the secondary roads part is, first off, there's three hundred and fifty thousand additional to the equipment, because our motor grader came in after fiscal twenty, so we just need to transfer the money, the money's there. Yeah. That's, that's the big thing there, and then, like I mentioned to you guys before, when I submitted it, there's construction for one oh five west. Um, I know that we haven't made a decision on whether or not we tip it, the reason I put it in there now was if we were able to pull the trigger on it, the projects there, I'm gonna need to know in the next couple of weeks whether we're gonna do anything, so I can pull the project if we don't, and in the meantime, I'll try to see what we can scrape up, I know that I'm working, in Mitchell County right now, I'm working on, we're gonna bury our farm-to-market account probably, and be three years borrowed ahead, and it's gonna be hard to dig out, but we have one point seven in there now, and if we use the one oh five trust fund, maybe that's enough to get a lot of this taken care of, but I wanna crunch some more numbers and see, the problem is, is that when we do projects next year, we're gonna have to tip for those, or we just don't do them, so, anything we have in farm-to-market for the, this, the, the next following years will be kind of in jeopardy for a while, so.
It's gonna take some planning, because I don't know when the, the windows are gonna be online, and we, that, that's the main thing, and then you have to do the, redo the urban renewal plan and all that good stuff, and it takes a little time.
Because I think some of them are actually coming online here in February, but not the whole bunch, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, I thought they usually put the switch on.
I mean, they've already, they weren't even testing them out.
I think some of them are.
There's been, yeah.
Someone coming online here first part of February, and it's only like twenty-one or something like that, I don't know exact numbers.
And I don't know how that starts with.
Right, so.
Because I don't think it starts at my office, it starts with.
So the situation is, if we amend it for this, and we choose not to do it, we're not outing, obviously, I'm not gonna let the project without the money, so.
Right.
It's one of those things where it could be a wash, but in case we do it, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the pro- the budget now, so that we know the money's there, if we pull the trigger or not.
So, just a question.
We need a dollar amount.
Yeah, if we can't do that project, how much are we gonna spend on just down in repairs on that section of the road next spring?
And then just throw money to.
You just throw money over the drain if we do it, you know, in a couple of years down the road.
I mean, we can patch it together with a dura-patcher for a season, but it's gonna cost a lot of money to do that too.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, the only thing to thank, we've had a pretty open winter, it probably hasn't gotten as bad as I thought it was.
Might even be worse than open.
Maybe it is.
Any free thought cycles with those things.
I know people continually are complaining about it, so.
But that's the reason, that's what's in there for the secondary roads, and, and that's just, like I said, if we're gonna amend, let's amend for it, if we don't do it, we don't do it, I guess, I don't know how that works with everybody else's, with, with the, the county budget in general, but usually it's, if I don't spend it, it doesn't get, you know, it's not gonna be borrowed either.
And if it ends up past July one, we'll have to put it back in again.
Right, so. I guess right now.
Well, assuming, we do have some other tiff, we have some other ability to use some of the tiff that we already have here, it is.
That's what.
So we do have the ability to do it.
Well, and, and to, you, you probably have another amendment before June, we'll know by June whether we're gonna do it this fiscal year, we'll crack that number back out, and then we'll just work with next, next year's budget too. There's things to do, I mean, we can, but I'm just, even if you updated, like I said, if we borrow, if we borrow ahead the farm-to-market account, that just stresses all the other projects later on down the road, we do have to have some FM money for, I know it's a bridge money, I guess.
That gives us a little more time to look at.
Well, we got an STD swap coming up in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna need some funds for it to backfill, so.
So, when you're saying STD, and he's asking questions, and he's, use, because I'm still catching up on abbreviations too, and.
You know what, I've got a document, I'll, uh, type up, so you guys.
I think you gave it.
All the money, how secondary roads is funded, that might help you out a lot, I did it for Mitchell County here.
What all these abbreviations stand for, it'd really be nice.
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll get you a document to help you explain it, if, if it's got an L in front of it, it's local money, it's secondary roads money, if it's got an FM, it's farm-to-market money, which is state money. If it's got swap in it, that used to be federal money, now it's state money, so. The biggest, the biggest challenges for us are the, the L projects that are local, that's where taxpayer money and road use tax money comes into paying for it. Everything else is usually a state fund, but if we don't have enough state funds, then we gotta pull local money into it, so. But I'll get you a document, it might help explain it a little bit better.
That'd be great.
It's, I'll tell you what, I've been here for, I'm starting twelve years, and it still gets confusing, just to try to shuffle all the money around and figure out where we can work and where, you know, just try to stay within those limits, when you've got.
And keep changing things.
They get, well, construction costs change, the, and, and the, the, the good thing is, is the one thing we've just been told here, this was on, uh, maybe it was last Wednesday, we found out that there's supposed to be a hundred and twenty-two million dollars coming to the state of Iowa for COVID relief.
Right, yep.
And they're gonna probably try to break down some of that money into the counties, now a hundred and twenty-two million for the state sounds great.
Yeah.
When I talk to the secondary roads engineer down, and, yeah, when I talk to them, if they do it by the road use tax equations, Worth County might be looking at, I don't know, I believe it'd be a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then there's supposed to be some bridge money, but that's gonna be even less, so I mean, we're not looking at a big amount of money, but it's something, I mean, if we get two, three, three hundred thousand dollars, that goes into the.
Which is bullshit.
Yeah, well.
It, it is, the bigger, the bigger, like Pope and the ones on the eastern part of the state, and Sioux County, those are the ones getting the money, and it's not right, we got as many problems as they do, it's not right.
That's true, they, they've got probably higher traffic counts and higher paved roads, or higher mileage, but still, I, if we get something, yeah, and, and, you know, we've got, we have, and I, I don't know if this is true, I've never looked into it, but I was always told we have the highest paved roads per capita in the state, that's a lot of, lot of paved miles for a small population, and it's expensive to maintain.
Maintain them.
So.
We've got some of the best roads in the, in the state too, even our secondary gravel roads.
Yeah, I'd like to think we do, even though we get a lot of complaints.
Just drive to Mitchell, just drive to Winnebago, they're, they're half of what we have for those, yeah.
Now, I'd argue with Mitchell, but.
Well, maybe you got some, but I know, I know where my in-laws farm is, and I've driven that many times, and it's nothing compared to what we, graded up wise, what we have.
There are some road, yeah, all roads need, some roads need improvement.
I'm not saying things aren't getting done over there, but it's just, but you look at Winnebagos, and they really, their roads are nothing.
And I'll tell you, Mitchell and Worth County is level Bs, and I got some clarification on that, I don't wanna diverge from that.
Yeah, no, but, so.
Is that it for amendments then?
Or the amendment?
I just need a motion and a roll call.
All right, is there a motion to approve the, uh, fiscal year twenty-one budget amendment?
I'd like that motion.
Your second?
I'll second that motion.
Right, there is a motion and a second, uh, any other discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, Smaby?
Aye.
Littleburg?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
That motion will pass, and the amendment is approved.
Get your signings hand ready for next week.
Not a problem, hopefully I'll be out of the woods here by the end of the day, but either way, we'll make it work, and I'll get there when I can, so. Right, is there anything else then? I think we got everything on the agenda, right?
So.
Okay, I guess they'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, meeting is adjourned, thanks for your time, everybody.
Thanks, AJ. All right, ending the meeting.